All set? Well, good. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, November 18th, at 7:00 PM, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, in the Sala Meeting Room. Just a reminder, everybody, tonight's meeting is being recorded by Canton Community Television, and it can be viewed at later dates also. First on the agenda is Public Comment Period. I'll read a bi-weekly statement before we start. "Public Comment of the Meeting Is An Opportunity To Listen To Residents' Feedback And Concerns, However, It's Not Meant To Be A Question-and-answer Format. There'll Be No Response To Any Public Comment When Presented. The Public Comment Portion Of The Meeting Is Limited To Fifteen Minutes Total, And Up To Three Minutes Per Speaker. Those That Wish To Speak Should Stand At The Microphone And Wait To Be Recognized By The Chair. Please State Your Name And Town You Live In. Your Address Is Not Required. I Would Ask All Members Of The Audience Be Respectful Of Each Speaker, As Well As Each Other. Anyone That Does Not Wish To Speak Or Is Unable To Do Due To The Time Limit, They Submit Their Comments In Writing For The Board's Review And Consideration." That Being Said, We'll Start Public Meeting At Seven O'Clock.
Brenda Sweeney, Canton. My opinion. They say the third-party culprit explains why John's phone was called seven times between 12:29 and 12:50 AM. Why Higgins was on administrative duty at Canton PD at 1:30 AM. Why all the butt dials. Why Proctor didn't recuse himself. Why CPD was recused but still participated. Why "I hit him, I hit him, I hit him" isn't in any report. Why there was no probable cause to enter the house. Why the crime scene wasn't secured. Why we never saw Ring Camera footage from across the street. Why so many names were misspelled in the state police report. Why six drops of blood were found with his body, but not the three liters he lost. Why the ME found no signs of a vehicular strike. Why the broken bones below his neck were from CPA, not the car. Why John vomited into his underpants while he was laying down. Why the 6:00 AM search only found clear cocktail glass. Why the clear glass, later documented on the bumper, didn't match that cocktail glass. Why taillight was found for weeks-on-end. Why chain of custody for John's clothes in the taillight didn't begin until weeks after they were collected. Why no one ever looked for that Ford Edge. Why witnesses weren't separated, some not interviewed for months, and most interviews not recorded. Why there's scribners errors in the report of the toe of the Lexus and no picture of the taillight while it was indicted. Why the library footage disappeared. Why one Sally Port video is missing 42 minutes and one is inverted. Why cell phones were destroyed. Why the dog's in witness protection. Why we only saw a screenshot of her phone. Why Julie wanted to give Mikey a gift. Why we heard "Tell him the guy never went in the house." Why the ice cream truck was in the neighborhood. What remains a mystery is why some CPD command staff, Canton's little helpers, some mass state police, the DA, and some of his minions allowed these people to get away with murder. And how they can sleep at night knowing what they did. Some say if that's not a problem for them, then this isn't their first rodeo. Remember Josh Levy? No fear, no favor. That oath doesn't put you above the law, it makes you guardians of it. Those we trust with that responsibility need to be held accountable for their actions. We'll be back. Secrets don't always stay buried. Reed's legal team is bringing a sledgehammer. Those walls will come crashing down. Your chance to pretend you didn't know the truth is gone with the wind. It's called conspiracy. You should get your own deal before that's gone with the wind too. Thank you.
Jonathan Camo Adobar. Seems that we have a person missing who I guess is, doesn't want to do some real work up here tonight. Remember that Select Board member? Who reminded us to get real work done? While he apparently finds himself in court because allegedly, he didn't get his work done paying his own credit card bill. Again, Capital One claims Chris didn't pay his debt. They escalated it all the way to a legal format. Chris is now required to appear or respond by the March date. This is it, right here. Chris wants the whole town to get work done. I think Capital One wants Chris to get some payments done. Maybe the real work he's talking about should be opening his mail, answering his debt collectors, and showing up at Small Claims Court in front of a judge, March 25th, 2026. Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Murphy, Marshfield. My speech is going to be brief. I want to credit Brenda for another fine job tonight because, but most of what Brenda said is what I was going to include tonight myself. As you know, I was a police officer in this community for almost 30 years. And I have maintained from the beginning, I believe that the Select Board should have impaneled a Select Committee to review what happened on the morning of 1/29/22 and the days after that. I believe firmly that the command staff should have been all put on paid administrative leave, that they let the community down, they let John O'Keefe down, they let Karen Reed down. They let everybody in this room down and everybody watching on that TV. I believe, if you haven't seen today, what was unveiled and unpeeled as far as what the civil case is going to be brought against many of the third-party culprits and eventually the town of Canton, municipal workers, police officers. It was unveiled in hours today. And I believe that Alan Jackson and the defense team wrote it out from A to Z and took all the guesswork out. So if you haven't seen that, anybody, it would behoove you to watch it on one of these podcasts. It could be The Young Jerks, it could be Melanie Little. It's all there. And they dissected all 46 pages of what that tort action is going to bring against all parties, which were named today, as well as municipal people that are going to be named. And I just want to say that we're into the fourth year of John O'Keefe's not being able to have Thanksgiving dinner with his family and friends, while other people who might have been involved, in my opinion, are out cavorting around and going to the Legion and to the Town Club and to Wamper Tuck. And I think it's shameful. Justice for John O'Keefe. Thank you.
I guess we're, no one else is standing, so we'll end public comment and start the agenda, please.
All right.
Ms. Harrington, oh, just one quick note, if I may, and I forgot to mention in the beginning, Select Board Member Laufren is tied up in, out of state, he couldn't get back. His flight got canceled this morning, so he couldn't get back to this meeting. And Select Board Member Albert was having another commitment this evening, so. Just so you know, I didn't announce that earlier, so. Thank you, so.
First up, we have Commissioner Stady. Is he with us?
No.
All right, shall we move on? Okay. Next, we have the public hearing regarding the--
Nope.
He's scampering in.
Is he here?
There he is. Hello.
You're on.
It's close enough, Commissioner.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Commissioner Stady. How are you?
Members of the Board, great to be here.
Evening, Chief.
Sorry for the delay. Very happy to be here tonight. Well, quickly, I'm here to officially announce to the public, if they did not know, the granting of a grant from Norfolk County Commissioners to the town of Canton, specifically the Canton Fire Department, to help out with the blood transfusion special project they have in conjunction with Boston Medical Center. At the 911 ceremony, which I attended, and many of you did as well, I got speaking with Chief Robbery about how things were going and asked if there's anything we could do in the county to help him out. He indicated he had a problem with the blood warmers, the material needed to be bought. And I said, "Let me see what I can do." So frankly, I was able to do that, working with Joe Shea and of course Peter Collins and John Cronin, our director. And we, I hate to use the word, we found some money, but we were able to get some money from different sources and put together a nice grant for Chief to go forward on his project. And the nice thing about this is that it doesn't just benefit Canton. As you know, they've had, I think, something like 90 calls, maybe more so far, across the county, across the region. So I looked at this, and we looked at this as a real county project. This was perfect for what we're trying to do. And obviously, it benefits Canton, which I love, of course, but the main thing too is it helps the county. So it was an easy sell. And the other thing I want to mention, very important to mention, is that part of the project is being funded in part by the Canton Association of Business Industry. Actually, Mr. Manning here, he's always been a strong advocate for that as a member of the Board. They're kicking in the rest of the money needed to purchase one of the blood warmers. So it's kind of an example of a private-public joint venture. We're teaming up with Cabbie to purchase the unit for Chief to do his job and, you know, save lives. You know, county has done a few things, as you know. I think you're well aware of the fact that we do the Stealer of Wasted Measures in Norfolk County. We do that job for Canton and other towns as well. We have a very strong RSVP program helping out our veterans, which we're very proud of. And of course, we have the Aggie School. Nothing to do with tonight, but still, I want to put a plug in for that. We have about 10 students a year go from Canton to attend it. So we're doing some good things in Norfolk County. This is a good example of it. We're very, very happy to make this presentation official tonight and give the money to Chief Robbery and the town.
I just want to thank the Commissioners Shea, Collins, and Commissioner Stady for the money. This was unexpected. The blood warmers that we use now, it discontinued. We didn't expect that, so this is why we need money to get new ones. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Stady, for A, ornesses grant. Thank you, Cabbie, for kicking in also. That's a fantastic program that we started about two years ago, just about two years ago. And it's done great work so far. And we just hope we keep it going on that level.
That is medical-- excuse me, just one second. The medical director indicated at the meeting at the Commissioners, he said they may be looking to expand it. Hopefully getting a grant on the other side of 495. And again, increase the chance of saving lives, which would be great. It's great news.
So thank you, Commissioner, for what you did for us and what you do for the county. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other discussions from the Board members?
I just have a quick question. Outside of the state of Massachusetts, are field transfusions being done elsewhere, do you know?
Down in Florida, Texas, I believe Maryland. I think there's a hospital on the North Shore that's actually doing it too.
Right.
And I believe Brewster Amos is trying to get something set up. Town of Mansfield is trying to get their program up and running.
Awesome.
Pretty much the first. Yeah, the first, yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Great seeing you. Have a good holiday. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And that check has already been sent along, right? Check is not in the mail.
I thought you were going to hand me a check. No, I have the check.
Oh, you have-- Oh, yeah, I knew someone had it.
Make sure we get that for next meeting.
Do we need a motion for this? Do we need a motion? No, we don't. Okay. Very good. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the application for a new Section 12 General On-Premises All Alcohol License and a Common Victular's License for J. Goga, Cy Ram Corporation DBA CB Perkins, located at 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Mass. General Laws as amended that the Canton Select Board, acting as the licensing board for the town of Canton, will hold a public hearing regarding the application for a new Section 12 General On-Premises All Alcohol License and Common Victular's License for J. Goga, Cy Ram Corporation DBA CB Perkins, located at 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021. This meeting will be held on November 18th, 2025, on or after 7:00 PM, in the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021. Susan Harrington, Acting Canton Select Board Clerk. I move that the Board open the public hearing.
Motion is made to open the public hearing. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0. The public, welcome. And we know you've been at the mall for a long time. And we're going to get to listen to your presentation on what you want to do.
Good evening. So I'm counsel for a new here who is going to be the manager of the liquor license and at CB Perkins. You wanted to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Attorney Teresa Copanati. Molly Codien from Baker Raven Barbedoro. We represent the applicant here. And as Molly stated, he's been operating at the premises for a while. He also has another establishment down in Hyannis in the Cape that is a similar, same premise, Sagaro Lounge, and has a liquor license there also.
Yep. Everybody at the location will be tip-certified. They'll be serving small snacks and bites to eat. And then, any other questions that you all may have, we are happy to answer.
So just in last minute, so I was just-- reached out to the Board of Health and they had no issue with this. I did reach out to the building commissioner as to if there was any requirements needed to be done. And he said, "There's no use change whatsoever. It's just the license," so there was no problem with that. I just want you to be aware that your occupancy in that establishment isn't that big of an occupancy. And the concern would be to, as this is added to your business, you're going to have to keep an eye and make sure that occupancy is kept in check.
Yep. Yeah, just as an aside too, everybody will be ID'd and checked at the door, which I think will help keep track of that number as people enter the premises.
Yeah. Charlie, is everything else in order?
All their paperwork is in order, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion or questions? A little more.
Just clarify the hours of operation.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Are you modifying your hours of operation at all?
So--
They will be a little bit different. So I think it will be 12 to 10 PM.
12 to 10 PM. Usually closes at eight, but max?
Six is--
Usually, we close right now six. Because there's not much traffic. But after that traffic, we will close 10 o'clock.
Okay, so if we have that in the application, the hours of operation?
It should be.
Very good. Any other discussion from the Board? Anybody from the public wishing to talk? See you in nine, except the motion calls to public hearing. Motion made to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
All right. I move that the Board approve the application for a new Section 12 General On-Premises All Alcohol License and Common Victular's License for J. Goga, Cy Ram Corporation DBA CB Perkins, located at 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021.
Motion made. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your call.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the classification hearing for the assessors to assess each class of property for fiscal 2026. Classification hearing for the town of Canton. The Select Board will hold the annual classification hearing for the Board of Assessors in the Sala Meeting Room, in the Hall, on Tuesday, November 18th, on or after 7:00 PM.
The purpose of this meeting is to determine the percentage of each class of property for fiscal 2026. Upon this determination, the Board of Assessors will set the tax rates, subject to the approval by the Department of Revenue. The public is invited to attend. Gene Manning, Chairman, Board of Assessors. I move that the Board open the public hearing.
Motion made, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0. Good evening, Mr. Manning. Good evening, assessors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Great to be with you tonight. On behalf of Board of Assessors, Mr. D. Girallamo, Mr. Galvin, and our Town Assessor, Carolyn Floyd, we're here before you tonight to provide the annual classification for the town. The Assessors' Office worked closely with Mr. Collins and the Finance Department on this. As I'm sure the Board's aware, this is an important year for the town for the reassessment of all our residential and commercial properties that's been posted on the website and been going on for a while. So we have the latest update and our recommendations to the Board tonight. So just to give the Board a summary, the new growth this year for the town, which is an important metric for us, is $1,252,059. The assessors are recommending a shift of 1.6156, which would make the residential factor 0.8009 for the year. And just some statistics for the town, Mr. Chairman. The total taxable valuation of the town is close to $8.4 billion. That's commercial and residential. The town has increased in value by more than $458 million this year. And that's part of the new assessments of the town. And just some changes for residential and commercial. The median single-price assessment for a home is $859,400, which is a 4.9% increase from last year. The median tax bill will increase on an average, if the Board approves our recommendation, $276 from fiscal '25 to fiscal '26. The median condominium assessment is $466,400, which is a 5% increase from last year. And the median condominium income tax bill will increase from $154 will increase $154 from fiscal '25 to fiscal '26. Commercial and industrial assessments rose 5% from last year. And we talked a little bit about the value of the community. Commercial and business is $8.4 million. And just some additional numbers for the Board. The largest personal property taxpayer is ever sourced The largest commercial real estate taxpayer is DXL at 555 Turnpike Street. And they're paying approximately $1,265,487. And the largest residential real estate taxpayer is Print Hills, formerly Avalon, up on Randolph Street, at $629,000. The next reevaluation for the town is scheduled for 2031. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, we are recommending and request that the Board approve a shift of 1.6156, which would make the residential factor 0.8009 for fiscal '26. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the Board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. We received your packet last week on-- you had, excuse me, multiple options that were on the table.
Yes.
That we saw. This is the less evasive option that I see presented out of the three. I think it's very reasonable and it shows that we're not hitting the taxpayers with a real heavy hand, which is very important to me. I would just, for point of information, can we get this information in future years at an earlier time? Like instead of, like the week before or so, like maybe two or three weeks before? Those options that you guys are looking into? Or is that not very valuable to do that?
Well, we work with the Finance Department closely, but there are a couple of different metrics that the town has to achieve every year. So we work closely with the State on this, Department of Revenue. So everything has to be approved. So because we had an assessment this year, we had to send that to the State. The State auditors look at it, and we have to wait the various triggers and approval from the Department of Revenue. And then we work closely with Mr. Collins and the Finance Department in the recommendations of the numbers. So to answer your question, I mean, we'll certainly look into that and try to get the Board the information
I understand you're waiting for information to come back.
As quick as we can. So the Department of Revenue works with all municipalities. All 351 are setting their tax rates at the same time. I think we're a little bit, from what Carolyn was sharing with us, we're a little bit, believe it or not, ahead of the curve. And because we had the reassessments of commercial and residential, there was a lot of extra work that went into it. But rest assured, we'll do our best to try to get that as quickly as we can to you.
I understand the limitations. And I understand, you know, you're waiting for information from the State also.
Yes.
It's just that, you know, homework gets built up.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And Mr. Chairman, I always wanted to share that the tax rates, the residential rate will be $9.75 per thousand residential in 1967 for commercial. Last year was $9.89 in 2054. So the residential tax rate, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, will reduce by 14 cents per thousand. And commercial will decrease by 78 cents if the Board approves the recommendation. So of course, the valuations did go up, the assessments. But in the years that this Board of Assessors has been working, they really have a solid track record of seeing that rate go down. So, you know, that's been an important metric for the Board of Assessors and the Finance Department, and I think the Select Board in trying to manage the taxes, you know, within residents and businesses constraints in a tough year.
Well, I appreciate your work that you all put into it. Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the Board?
No.
Any questions or comment from the audience public? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Board, or assessors as well. I just want to clarify some of the facts that were just stated. So the RO percentage was .8 and the commercial .2, if I'm understanding.
That'll go through the chair to Mr. Manning, sir. That'll go through me.
Oh, sorry.
And then go through here. Okay, thank you.
Yes, residential factor is 0.8009.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting the Select Board does in this situation is implement the maximum shift allowed by the Massachusetts General Law of 1.75. Over the past 20 years, the town of Canton has had the ability and recorded with the Bureau of Local Statistics that the maximum shift could be reported at 1.75. Right now, our shift has lowered from 1.64 in the prior year to 1.61 in this current fiscal year '26. Therefore, we're passing the burden more on residential taxpayers and lessening the burden on commercial businesses. So I'm suggesting the Board move that shift to 1.75 and tax it to the max for the commercial and industrial businesses. And as a second option, what I would also recommend is implementing the small business exemption. For all the small businesses in town, there's the ability to implement a 10%. Businesses, small businesses have that, 10 employees or less. You can implement a 10% small business exemption. There's about five or six communities within the county that have this exemption on the books with the Department of Local Services at this time. So, and the third option I'd like to recommend to the Select Board to consider in voting today is potentially a residential exemption and shifting some of that burden to residents who own their home over to residents that don't own their homes within that tax pool. So there's three options to consider. One I would like to see at least happen today is moving that shift to 1.75. This would help to reduce the tax burden for all of our town residents and homeowners and seniors and veterans in town. And I think it's a no-brainer for the Board to do it. And I would be thankful if you could do it, especially with the other taxes coming on the books in 2029. I think it would be a great opportunity for all the town residents to save some money and make affordable housing, housing affordable again here in Canton by helping reduce the tax burden.
Mr. Manning, do you have a comment on that?
No, I appreciate the comments. Thank you for sharing that. What we try to do, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, when we look at the different metrics and the numbers that we recommended and the options that we have, is to try to also provide the financial means of the town's ongoing costs and expenses, working with the Finance Department, while also maintaining a reasonable burden for residents. As I stated, if the board, the Select Board tonight approves what the Board of Assessors is recommending, the actual rate, the actual percentage per thousand on both residential and commercial will go down for next year. Certainly, I think there's the possibility that we could look into the options being presented, but we're kind of in the 23rd hour here. And I know based on the vote of the board tonight, you know, we have to plan financial numbers, working with the Finance Department. It probably would impact billing, Mr. Scollins, as well if we change the numbers. Everything we do also, after it's approved by the board, has to be sent back up to the Mass Department of Revenue, as I mentioned previously. So, they look at a number of metrics. They have a fiduciary responsibility within the guidelines of the state on the shifts. The shifts are presented as options for the town to consider, no doubt about that. Those are all options for us to consider. This particular number here, we felt works well for the town. So, I see Mr. Scollins approaching, so I'll welcome his comments as well.
He's going to stand behind you.
Okay.
You can sit at the table if you want, Mr. Scollins.
The next chair there.
I just wanted to address the first item that Mr. Coe brought up, and that is the residential factor. These terms are quite confusing. It's the way we shift the tax rate is referred to in many different ways. But I just wanted to clarify that the town is indeed shifting the tax rate from business to residential to the maximum that it can. And the way that we know that is that in the tax recap form that's submitted to the DOR and is calculated by their program, they tell you what the lowest residential factor is that you are able to vote on. And so, I'm looking at it here right now and it's .80008365. So, we're at .80009. But as you go down further in the, in the options and see like, what does that additional .000635 get you? It actually doesn't change the tax rate. So, where we are at now is the lowest residential tax rate that the state will allow us to, allow the Select Board to vote on. So, there is no other lower option there. So, I just wanted to address that one.
Okay, so that being said, on my view here is that the information you brought to the table tonight is very, really interested, very, you know, but we don't have enough information from what you're saying to just make that change. I mean, this has been going on with the assessors for a while. And from what Randy's saying, we're peaking on the low. You're shifting, I know what you want to do, shift to the business. But I don't have enough information in front of me to do that decision tonight. I don't. What, one sec. And I think it's prudent to acknowledge what you're saying and how it's doing. But we have to get them factors in earlier than the night we have to vote on the rate. If you know what I'm saying, I don't have, what you're saying sounds good, but they still have, we have a lot of business in this town. And like us homeowners, I'm a homeowner in town. No one likes their taxes raised. I know I don't. We have a nice tax base from the business and we have a good tax base from the residential. But we can't push the entire burden on the business. We could be pushing business out of this community. And we don't want to do that, right? Their costs are going up. Everybody's costs are going up. From what I've received, and we've gotten three options from last week that we looked at, which was shifting the burden into different ways. And this option that we received tonight, the final option from the assessors, was the less evasive to both business and residential. And I want to support that this evening, but I don't want to throw your ideas out the window because next year it might be a great idea to come in earlier and bring that information to the assessor's office and we can work with that. But I can't make that decision based on what you're telling me tonight. I don't have enough information to do that. I have what our assessors, which they're taxed to do this, and our Finance Director to give us the guidance that we need to make a decision this evening. And what you're saying sounds good to take off burden, but I don't want to burden the entire business community. And I, we also have to consider what this town is looking ahead in the future for its capital needs. And we can't destroy the tax base or shift it to a, we're not going to be taking care of both sides. We have infrastructure problems. We have building problems. We have capital needs. Fight Department is looking at a ladder truck. So, we have to balance that and not just shift everything. We have to have some sort of balance. And I think from what I read, and I haven't read all, I've heard what you said tonight, which I understand what you're saying. But the information that I've received in the last few weeks has brought us to this conclusion that I would like to support the assessor's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, just one more comment, please. So, with the Division of Local Services, the town needs to register and certify a maximum shift allowable. I don't think that's been presented here. You just mentioned that there was three options given to you.
Yes, and this was the 11th, yes, there was.
One option. I was watching another community. What they do is they do a PowerPoint presentation and they show the, all the different shift categories that could be presented to the board, the Select Board. And they'll show what types of variations that has on moving those shifts. We're not changing the levy at all. We're just changing the burden. And what has happened in this year's burden? More shift has gone to the residents than the businesses. So, we moved from 1.64 as certified on the Division of Local Services last year to a 1.61 is what is being proposed this year. So,
Understanding what you're saying.
Businesses year over year.
I understand what you're saying. We're not having a PowerPoint this evening. We have been giving, the Select Board has been giving information to base our decision on. And it's based on the assessors' work, what they've done, from the numbers they got back from the state, from our Finance Director. And I'm willing, and I want tonight to settle this this evening, but I'm not, in the future, going down the line, it would be good to look into your ideas, to do that PowerPoint. But it's the 23rd hour and this has to be done. And I don't want to shift just based on one person's perception of what they think we can do. I don't want to do that. I'm personally not going to do that. I'm not speaking for everybody. I'm opening discussion to the board.
I just had a question. Would you say the tax rate should be for businesses? How much should it go up?
The shift is
What's the shift?
What was presented by the Board of Assessors was 1.6.
And what do you think it should be?
And some change. And I'm suggesting 1.75. You know, the town has gone as, as high as, you know, 1.7, 1.8 in prior years. And right now, they're dropping the shift toward the residents. And I'd hate to see that, especially with a lot of debt coming on the books. That's been, the residents have been hit with the override that's going to come in 2029. So, if we can get ahead of this. And since the board doesn't want to consider that, it seems unlikely. There's my understanding that there's also been a reevaluation of commercial property in town.
It's been a reevaluation of all properties in town.
And in terms of the reevaluation, I just did a quick broad overview of that. Here's a $50 million sale property being assessed at 20 million. Here's a $37 million property being assessed at 24 million. Here's a $25 million property being assessed at 13 million. That could go on and on. There's several properties like that. And these were all done in 2021, 22. These were sales were done. According to the assessor's website, they take data from comparative market sales. And there's no special tax agreements on file with any of these. I was on the Finance Committee during that time. We didn't review anything for those properties that I just listed. So, there's a problem with the way the commercial property was reevaluated. And the town needs to hire a new professional to come in and review the commercial property again and not wait till 2031 is what I think was presented earlier.
Just going up, once again, you're throwing numbers at us, which is, I'm not saying you're wrong at all. But the number, the sheet, the cherry sheet that I have, I saw two properties that reduced in value or disappeared. And I think my belief is they went to our profit. I'm not positive, but when you have a property that's listed at 20 million or 250,000 and it disappears on the, or it goes down, there was one, I don't have that sheet right with me, which I did. There was one property listed that went down on your sheet that you've given us. I could look it up. Let's do it.
All of these properties have 100% certified tax ratio. They should be being taxed at the mark.
Understood. But as I said in the beginning, and I'm still standing my cause, your information is good, you're good, sounds reliable and good, whatever. You're an individual that's looked into stuff. I understand that. I also have an assessors department. I have a Financial Director in front of me. They've given us options. The option they gave us, to me, the options they gave, this option is the less evasive that I like. Your shift puts everything on the business side. I don't think that's fair either. I don't think that's fair at all, just jumping everything onto the business side. Is that shift, could that shift change a little? Yes, it can. But I'm not going to do that, my personally vote on, on changing that shift that's recommended tonight, this evening. I'm not going to. I like what I see here and I'm going to vote for it. I'm speaking for myself. You can.
Chair, through you. Say one of those assessments again, something was 20 million, it was assessed at 8 million.
$37 million property assessed at 20 million. There's a $37 million property assessed at 24 million.
Okay, thank you. So, can you explain that? Like, why would that happen? Like, if something is 37 million and gets assessed at 20? I'm just curious.
Well, there's many different reasons. I don't know what particular property he's referring to, but properties have baseline values that the Board of Assessors is constantly looking at. There's a number of different reasons property can be sold at a less value. Properties can be sold at an increased value. A building can have changes and modifications to it that changes the value.
Yeah.
So, I know that's what the Board of Assessors looks at and enables us to be able to come up with a common baseline. We constantly look, I can tell you right now, the town is very fortunate, I present this at town meeting every year, to be able to have 29, over 29% of our tax revenue at commercial.
Yeah.
Very few other towns have that mix.
No, I know that.
And we have the split tax rate. Commercial do pay more.
One other question. I know, I see that. One, the 37 to 20 million, whatever he said, is that common to have that kind of swing? Like, if someone bought it for 37 million and then it's assessed at 20 million? Like,
No, typically the assessor's office will review updates and property values on that. So, that's something that the office looks at all the time.
All right. I just was curious. Thank you.
You have something to say? Yep.
First of all, I agree. I'm inclined to go with the number that's in front of us, even though Mr. Cloud raises some very interesting points. I don't know if anyone in the room can answer this, but I'm curious about the small business exemption. Does anyone have any idea what the impact would be?
If that was something, that, thank you, Mr. Chair. If that was something that was, you know, considered and adopted by the Board of Assessors and accepted by the Select Board, it targets businesses with revenues up to $1 million and no more than 10 employees. And it does a minor shift of the tax burden away from them to the rest of the business properties. Just like the residential exemption, that's another exemption that could be considered. If that were, then how that works is it just shifts the burden within the residential class. It doesn't shift it out to the business classes. It shifts the burden from the lower valued homes to the higher valued homes. So, those are the mechanics of how those work.
And we don't have that offered right now at this time.
Has been brought up. It's certainly something could be considered.
Do we have any, I mean, does anyone know how many businesses in town meet that criteria? What, you know, what the impacts of that might be? That's my question.
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at that, you know, in terms of the number of businesses that would be eligible, gain interest from them, and then also potential tax impact on the town. But I think it's certainly something that we could bring up and the board could look into.
Okay.
Okay.
Knowing that, you know, the first five years of a small business are very tough and,
Absolutely.
And we've seen that turnover of businesses downtown. So, having some way to give them a leg up would be awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have one other question, since you're here. The other question I have is the, I know we were successful with that pilot program. I'd love to see that on nonprofits, like ones we discussed. And also, there's other nonprofits in town. I don't know how many properties they have. So, for example, Ben Fen up operates one home near my house. And they're a nonprofit with $100 million a year and, you know, income. But, so maybe that's something we could also look at and think about in terms of generating more tax dollars.
Yes.
Since we're going into a tight spot with the new school.
Absolutely. The board looks into that frequently. We are on the verge of having a pilot agreement that we'll hopefully be presenting to the Select Board in the first quarter of 2026. We're also working on a couple of other entities. But rest assured, the assessor's office looks at every single possibility that we can to try to uncover revenue opportunities for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
This is open for me, but do I understand correctly that this will not, this assessment won't happen again until 2031? Is that what you said?
Revaluation.
Reevaluation. So, with whatever you decide tonight, we're stuck with until then? Or is this something you do every year?
No, I believe next year, we have another classification next year, same time.
Yeah, we,
So, how can we do this? So, it's not, it's too bad, it's the 23rd hour and we got to do it whether you like it or not? Because that's not okay. So, he has a valid point and that needs time and that should be considered somehow. And I get tonight, you're kind of blindsided by it, but that shouldn't happen next year at all.
Absolutely. I totally agree with that. But this is a public meeting to discuss it, his concerns and his ideas. Definitely, you know, I'm definitely listening to it because, you know, it's the first time I heard that, a different option other than what was presented with the options we have. But the information that I have in front of me this evening and this board has in front of me this evening,
No, I understand.
I'm going to make my best decision based on that.
I understand that. What I'm saying is it's the 23rd hour, we got to do it right now and we need to find a way so that does not happen again.
But I think we could work with the,
If there's other options, it should be
But I think that could have, that could be brought up to the assessor's office and have a discussion with the assessors by any public entity. They're available, assessors' office for a discussion or what have you. And then maybe, and I can't, I don't know if I'll be sitting here next year, but if I am, maybe we can have a forum with the assessors prior to it and say, hey, these are the options, that's what we got to do. It's just ideas. But I would have that discussion with the assessors and the Finance Director to see which best way to handle that.
Well, you know, as a citizen, I appreciate that. But I really think it's important that it's a more open process.
I definitely agree with that.
Mr. Chair, just one last, final comment, if I may. From my understanding, this meeting happened at the 11th hour. It happened at 5 o'clock earlier today, as opposed to on the Board of Assessors website. So, you got the information, everybody got the information at the 11th hour is probably what happened is my guess, because I didn't attend that meeting.
Well, no.
But what I would suggest the board do is adjourn today and come back to the hearing next week and review some of the options to get more details, rather than just ram it through and say that it is what it is and we can't do anything till next year. The board should take this seriously and review the other options. At least give the public the three other options that are on the table.
The, thank you. The three other options that I reviewed, and we received them a week or so ago with the numbers in certain evaluation sheets. The number presented tonight was the best option that I saw out of all the options that we had available. I still think it's the best option at this time. And we have to set this rate. We have to get this going. And I am advised of what you've said this evening, but I want to move this on and get this voted tonight and get this settled. And with the thought from this board, from this board that we have to kind of look into some of the questions and possible presentations in the future prior to this date next year. That being said, you have.
Which is, I was just informed that the shift, the top rate is 1.6455 and I suggest that the board implement that as presented on sheet. This is 26 right here.
That was last year. Now this is up to April.
He's at 1.6.
Okay, I think we're, sir.
Read the max. Read the max shift. Not shift any further with the residential factor.
We're at the max shift for the residential. Okay, that being said, we're at, we're at the max shift for the residential. That's what we're at. That's what was told to us, that was told to the public, and that's what I'm going with. I'm going with the numbers that we received. I like this option that we have and we're under advisement of what you've said and we will look forward to that in the next coming year. And that's what we're gonna go with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. The Board of Assessors did meet at 5:00 PM tonight at the posted time in the Assessors Office. It's a public meeting, all of our meetings are public. We've had people attend. We welcome people to attend to give feedback. The shift was one of our conversations. As I mentioned, we work closely with the Finance Department and the Mass Department of Revenue on many different factors that comprise the information we submit to the board. We don't take it lightly. I'm a homeowner, all of you are homeowners. I work closely with the business community. We certainly want all the metrics to work for all concerned parties. We certainly don't want to put anyone at an unfair basis. We want to balance that with the required funds that municipality of Canton needs to operate. So rest assured, there's no intention to withhold information from the board or present anything that we don't think's in the best interest of collaboratively the entire community, residency and businesses. Also, I just wanted to point out that the next revaluation is 2031, but the Assessors constantly update and evaluates properties based on recent sales. And we're before the board every year in the years I've been on the board and tenured members have been members longer than me are before the board to recommend a shift based on the metrics we provided to you tonight. So the shift is every year presented to the board around this time because Q1 tax bills are due to Mass DOR and that has to be completed on time. So we're certainly open to any changes, any way to provide efficiencies and we appreciate your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. How many meetings do you have during the course of the year? Would you say?
We meet monthly, so, yeah.
And they're all public meetings?
They're all public meetings, yes.
So there's a perfect time to actually listen to residents and get their concerns and interests at those meetings so that you're informed of what their concerns are. So, thank you.
They could call the board.
Call the board.
Ask us to have them tell them that want to attend our meeting and we'll, you know, set it up so they can attend, you know?
Okay.
Discuss a little.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that the board close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll accept the motion for the shift change.
I move that the board adopt residential factor of 0.8009 for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0. And we have another, is there another number? We have to, no, that's it?
Just rose.
That's it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate your support and have a good evening and nice Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, Paul.
Mr. Harrington.
Mr. Scollins, don't go anywhere. Next up, Mr. Scollins is gonna give us a Finance Department update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr.
Good evening, nice to see you.
Members of the board, Mr. Commendator. So we're, we've been working really hard in the Finance Department this year to go back to our roots, you know, so we're gonna migrate a new system, gonna move away from the sophisticated unit system, going back to the abacus. It's a lot simpler, you know?
That's so nice.
Shouldn't have any negative impacts on anything. Just kidding. Thank you for. Thank you for having us in here tonight. So with me as well is our town accountant, Allison Pedersky. And we're gonna cover some of the major items that the Finance Department's involved in, certainly not all of them. And I'll let Allison kick us off.
So there's always something to talk about in accounting, but I'm gonna pick a few key items that we're working on this fall. We're two months into our FY25 financial audit. The audit team spent a week on site in early October and they visited various departments and they've reviewed all the procedures and processes. In addition to examining our financial statements, the auditors also conduct compliance audits of our federal and state grants. As part of their work, they review and test selected transactions, excuse me, to verify the accuracy and reliability of the information reported in our financial system. We're also working really closely with the auditors to achieve Canton's 20th consecutive certificate of achievement in financial reporting. And revenue and operating expenses were on plan for the first quarter of FY26. We haven't closed October yet, but the preliminary results indicate that we will remain on plan through October. The only exception is the impact of the trash strike on DPW expenses. We incurred approximately $230,000 in additional expenses over and above what was budgeted, but Charlie's been working with Dan Higgins, so hopefully they can come to a tentative agreement to make us whole.
That's the plan.
I'm sure there's more to come on that. And as calendar year, preparations are underway. We've begun coordinating with all the departments to verify the accuracy of employee records ahead of our final payroll processing. Following the last payroll of 2025, we will produce W2s, 1099s and 1095s for distribution. The W2s and 1099s must be postmarked by January 31st. Our staff will review approximately 4,000 records between employees, vendors and health coverage information, and the majority has to be done by the end of January. So we're gonna be very busy in the upcoming months.
And next up on our topic list is the FY26 tax rate setting process, which thankfully you concluded your classification hearing tonight. But then over the next six weeks, there'll be a lot more work that'll be done in order to finalize the process. Finance in assessing has to submit documentations to the Department of Revenue for their tax rate approval. That will happen tomorrow morning. The Collector and the Assessors Office will develop the tax bill files and send to our mail print vendor. It's cheaper for us to do that than have more staff to do that. That's the way the town's been operating. So the third and fourth quarter tax bills are received by January 1st, 2026, postmarked no later than December 31st, 2026. And since this was brought up, just indirectly about potentially moving the timing of your vote this evening, that has significant ramifications which came up in a prior year. And the ramifications are from state law. The state requires that if the third and fourth quarter tax bills are not postmarked by December 31st, then the third quarter bill is not due February 1st, it's due May 1st, along with the fourth quarter bill. So if that were to happen, we would obviously have to comply with that and that would put a $25 million blowhole in our cash flow, you know, for the town. So that would create significant consequences. So that's why, you know, we're adamant that we do not defer this process any longer. This year, we worked hard with the Assessors Office to get it to this date as opposed to Thanksgiving week because of all the things that need to be done that in order to not have that happen, which we don't want that to happen. That would be calamitous for the town. And I wanted to also highlight, as you know, that we haven't been taxing to the levy limit for the last five years and that will continue for a sixth year. That was part of our strategic plan to, to fund the GMS project, the Galvin Middle School project with the short-term bans that we've issued. We issued a $35 million ban in August and we'll do three more for the next three years in the same August anniversary timeframe. And we will pay for the interest on those short-term notes before we permanently bond in fiscal 30. We will pay that not from excluded debt tax, which the taxpayers generously voted to increase their taxes to pay the debt service on this. But our strategy had been to put money away into capital stabilization. We've been doing that for five years. We'll do it for three more, $8 million there plus the interest. And then in fiscal 28 is when we'll start to tap the excess tax levy to partially fund the interest payments in fiscal 28 and 29. And then we would continue to use the, that excess levy capacity in fiscal 30 to go towards the permanently bonded debt service. And the impact of that is, is that this excess levy capacity that we've been sparing the taxpayers $10.5 million over the last five years, that's what the taxpayers have not saved, have saved by us not taxing to the levy limit as a strategy to try to reduce the cost of the burden of this Galvin School project. This will ultimately fund 36% of the excluded debt tax when it kicks in on the permanent bonds in FY30. So we're trying to, trying to be as favorable to the taxpayers as we possibly can. So I think that's, that's indication right there of what hasn't been taxed and the savings that have accrued to taxpayers since. Another item I just wanted to mention briefly unrelated to the tax rate setting process has to do with the tax collection process. There's a new, there's a new law that requires the town to civilly serve delinquent taxpayers. This was a result of the U.S. Supreme Court decision that worked favorably in property owners or former property owners' favor if they were foreclosed upon. And, you know, their house, property got sold before this Supreme Court decision in 2024, whoever was conducting the foreclosure process, bank, mortgage company, the town, could hold on to the excess equity that was in the home. That can no longer happen. And so that's as a result of a Supreme Court decision, which is pretty significant and definitely in the interest of homeowners that find themselves in that situation. However, as a reaction to all of that, the state made all kinds of adjustments to what we call the tax leaning, sometimes referred to as the tax taking process, but it's leaning, it's not taking the property, it's putting a lien on the property and registry deeds. They, the state now requires, in addition to all of the other notifications that were legally required to provide, a tax bill, a demand notice if it's after it's five days late, a notice of tax taking after that, after a certain amount of time, a publishing of the list of all the new tax delinquent accounts. Used to be in the newspaper, thankfully they changed that law, this year it can be on the website. So that's why you won't see that list on, in the newspaper this year, you'll see it on the town's website. And we have to post it into public buildings as well, this list of folks who unfortunately fell into it on their taxes. But now in addition to that, the state law requires that we civilly serve the property owners, which means a physical serving. You have to deliver a notice, attach it to the door of the property, or if there's no building on it, you have to put a stake in the ground with the notices on it. And so that was brand new. It was something that, brand new to all 351 collectors in the state. The state unfortunately wasn't well versed in exactly how to pull this off between Sue DeJardin, my assistant, Treasure Collector and myself. We figured it out and the way to do it was to work with the Civil Process Division of the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office. This is what they do. And now this is going to be a new civil process that they do and they do it very efficiently for $25 an account. They physically serve all of the, all of the property owners. They pay for everything that allows them to affix something to the property and all the stakes, et cetera, and provide us with detailed return of service that they've actually done this with pictures. So we're very pleased with this process that just completed this past week and hats off to Norfolk County Sheriff's Office, Civil Process Division. But that's a new thing that's required. And interestingly enough, it spurred some immediate payments of past due taxes in the tens of thousands. So, you know, like within that same week. So we were pleased with the result, but initially I wasn't so pleased that this was yet another notification provided to taxpayers. But now it's required by law, so we have to do it and it yielded some success. So we talked about FY25 financial audit, 26 budgetary performance, 26 tax rate setting. Now it's on to the FY27 capital and operating budget processes, which have begun. So municipal capital requests are in and they're currently oversubscribed by $2.5 million even after $2.16 million in other funding sources identified. Department heads will be reviewing their requests with you at your December 2nd and December 16th meetings. So as we run through the process with the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, there'll be some tough decisions to be made unless we can find some significant funding to bridge that gap. But that's always the case. We're always gonna be oversubscribed. This year it's a little bit higher. And then next week, we will kick off the FY27 operating budget process, where we distribute instructions and templates to all the department heads. And then the department heads will be reviewing with you their requests in January. Another item that I know some of you are very interested in, or if not all of you, is we have new water and sewer rate study that's in process. We issued a request proposal, receive proposals, the committee, the Water Sewer Rate Policy Committee met last week to rank and select a preferred vendor from the responses to the RFP. And what's happening this week is that reference checking is happening with the, with the preferred vendor and assuming that that comes back, comebacks, comes back well, which we've already received three references that came up back standing. Our goal is to have a recommendation to the Select Board in early April for the FY27 rate setting. And for that meeting, we're planning to, to have two presentations to the Select Board so that the Select Board and the community has plenty of time to consider, excuse me, what may be some different changes than you've seen in the past in recommendations here. So we want to give it plenty of time for it to percolate here and with the community. So that's coming, we're on track, so that should be coming in, that will be coming in April. One other thing to highlight here is our OPEB liability, other post-employment benefits, meaning not pension, basically health, life and dental insurances for retirees. So our biannual update, which is required, was recently completed by an independent actuary and the plan had an, had an unfunded liability decrease of 3.66 million. So now it's down to 83.3 million. It's the largest unfunded liability, largest liability that the town has. As you know, we've been funding proactively towards it, over a million dollars every year. The plan had an experience gain of 3.89 million in the OPEB liability, mainly due to fewer retirees and their spouses electing coverage than expected. And then due to some technical adjustments that are also required in the actuarial analysis that increased the liability by 800,000. And then we decreased it by another 570,000 more due to gains in investment earnings beyond plan. And last item that we wanted to highlight was, as you probably recall from this past August, we moved our annual debt offering or bonding cycle from late spring to late summer. This year was in August, then in May, and that was done primarily to eliminate the need for a fifth short-term borrowing for the Galvin Middle School project. So in this way, we'll only have four, which is less expensive to do that. So we'll have three more, one next August, next August after that, and 28, next August after that, and 29. And then the permanent, permanent bonding will be in fiscal 2030. And that results in more precise evaluation of borrowing needs after the year closes for, for the town's capital projects. And what we found, because this is a new process for the Finance Department. And, and what we found, because this is a new process for the Finance Department that can have ramifications for the free cash certification, that we're allowed to true-up capital project deficit accounts up to 90 days after the fiscal year closes. So hence is why we bonded in, in August. And what we learned is that's the largest cities, that's the cycle that they are on for, for similar reasons. They want a more precise number because the numbers that they're borrowing are multiple of what we are. So that's, that's all we had unless you had any, any questions for us.
That's a mouthful, Andy. That's good. Thank you.
You have more.
We're into the capital and budget season now. And when I, you said it earlier, I just, when does the capital come in front of us? When are those requests going to be coming for us?
Your next two meetings, December 2nd.
So it's December meetings and then the budgets are in January?
Yes.
And has capital, sorry, Mr. Murphy, has capital seen any other question?
No.
When do you meet? When do you stop meeting if you would like to ask that?
Sorry, I can't follow. I was hoping for a presentation. I, I have trouble hearing.
Okay, no problem. We'll discuss it later. Thank you.
The, we're required by bylaw to, you know, get the, the capital request, which administratively, internally, we're reviewing with all the department heads, making sure they're in good shape. We're required to get them by bylaw to the Capital Planning Committee by the end of December. And so that's when we would deliver it to them.
Beginning of the year, they'll sign.
Yeah, and they'll typically, you know, meet with the department heads, January, February, and March, before they make their, their recommendation to the Finance Committee in March.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I understand you correctly that the water and sewer rate study is, is trying to address the inequities with renters?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
That's going to be a key focus.
We have a question or comment?
Yeah, registered in Canton. I'm going to ask, who announced today that Canton's going to be sued for a court of significant civil rights case?
And how is that liability dealt with? What happens to the citizens?
Excuse me, yes, please, thank you. Could you answer that, Randy?
As of today, there, there is no liability. There's no liability today.
So when the town gets sued, nothing happens to the citizens? We don't have to pay anymore? Or how does that work? I just want to know how it works. That's all.
We haven't.
Please hold it.
Thank you. And I don't think it's something we could, we can talk about anyways.
Couldn't talk about it.
But we haven't been sued, and so there's nothing to talk about.
So that has to happen.
Do we have insurance in case we're sued?
If the town has insurance, yes.
Is there a limit on how much that covers?
It's not appropriate to talk about.
That's, can't be discussed at this evening.
Where can it be discussed? Where can it be discussed?
Well, first of all, we don't have any knowledge of a lawsuit towards us at the moment.
Okay, but.
And when that comes, we will have to determine what Town Council tells us and where we head from there.
So if we have a lawsuit, I can come here and ask where I can go to find that out?
It would be based on Town Council's recommendation as to what can be disclosed during the lawsuit or if we even have any involvement.
Good. I'll just, just a point of information. When there are, when there's litigation, whether it's the town as a whole or the employee, we have, we have insurance and those cases are forwarded to our insurer and they assign counsel to defend the town in such cases. So I, I can't tell you my policy, our policy limits right now because I don't have them in front of me, but certainly you can reach out to me and I can explain a little bit to you how insurance works in the municipal world.
Thank you.
Anything else for our Finance Department? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Hamilton, who do we have next?
Next, we have our Assessors Department update, Ms. Floyd.
Good evening.
Just to start, a couple of the questions that he had about a residential tax. That would have to be if you have a single tax rate, then you could do a residential exemption. But Canton does not have that.
Does not have that.
So I live in Waltham and we have a residential exemption because it's a city and usually only cities have them. We do have other exemptions available though that you have to qualify for. But we could discuss that with anybody that wants to check that out. And also, the reason that we were late getting you the information, we have to go out and visit, I'm sorry, I'm shaking because of.
Don't shake.
My blood sugar is not doing well.
That's why I was here in case she needs some backup. She needs something.
I just went down and got some candy, but I'm still not doing that great. We value the properties according to state law to be within 90 to 110% of market value by analyzing the sales. That does happen every year. And when I first started working here, the assessments only changed every three years, but we do interim adjustments every year because of the way technology has changed. And we have to pass our sales data through the Department of Revenue, which we, we start this usually in September and we have to wait for certification from them. And they have to analyze our sales, look at them, they, they come out and they also check on different properties. And then we have to give them the LA4, which shows what the different state classes are. They have to approve that. They have to prove our new growth. And we just had all of that done yesterday. But we, we gave them the information a while ago, so it's a lot waiting on them. That's why it's tough getting me this stuff until the last minute like that. But during the rest of the year, we basically go out and pick up new construction. We create the residential property cards ourselves by doing the sketches and adding the information, taking the pictures. So we're kind of always out there, but people don't usually see us unless you take out a permit. And we update the maps every year. We process deeds and record sales. We work with finance because the finance in building software feed off of our camera system. So we're kind of responsible for all the information that everybody has on the town. We process deeds and process all the real estate and excise bills and commit them in munis. We process exemptions, abatements for real estate and excise, and we represent the town at the appellate tax board. And we process forms, a list for business personal property, which we do have a minimum, a maximum of, you have to have at least 10,000 to be charged for that. Income and expense reports, the three ABCs for the exempt properties, chapter land applications. So we're working most of the year.
Just a question. When a building permit is pulled and for an addition, say, in any neighborhood, do you reassess that property after they close off the building permit or?
No, the town adopted chapter 653 because normally the assessment date is as of January 1st. We adopted chapter 653 years ago where we can pick up new construction up until June 30th. So whatever point the property is at that time, because I know we had, you know, some people are only at 50% finished, but we charge them according to how much they have and then finish off the next fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, I need the board to appoint the maintenance foreman, Michael Terrell.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
I move that the board accept and authorize, excuse me, the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 53A, the following donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services. $1,000 from Victor Del Vecchio and Alicia Lopez Family Fund. In memory of Marilyn Geller. $25 from David and Robin Hoffman. $75 from Mark and Janice Brockman. And $25 from Elaine M. Lovett.
Motion made. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
I move that the board accept the Police Department Municipal Road and Safety Grant for Fiscal Year 2026 in the amount of $31,576.58.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Way to go, Patty.
Yes.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
Okay. I, do I have to guess? Okay. I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve alcoholic beverages at one-day events for winter lights at Bradley Estates for 2025-2026 at 2468B Washington Street to be held on November 28th, 2025, November 29th, 2025, November 30th, 2025, December 3rd, 2025, December 4th, 2025, December 5th, 2025, December 6th, 2025, December 7th, 2025, December 10th, 2025, December 11th, 2025, December 12th, 2025, December 13th, 2025, December 14th, 2025, December 17th, 2025, December 18th, 2025, December 19th, 2025, December 20th, 2025, December 21st, 2025, December 22nd, 2025, December 23rd, 2025, December 31st, 2025, January 1st, 2026, January 2nd, 2026, January 3rd, 2026, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
I move that the board approve the perpetual care deeds.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
The vendor warrant total for the week of 11/6/25, $1,653,912.24. The payroll warrant for the total for the week of 11/6/25, $2,600, oh, sorry, $2,601.40. The vendor warrant for the week of 11/13/25, $3,983,041.25. The payroll warrant for the total for the week of 11/13, $2,028,633.40. Next, I move that the board approve the minutes of the Select Board meeting of November 4th, 2025.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 3-0.
Mr. Duty, do you have any updates for us?
Few items for you tonight. First, just an announcement. The municipal parking lot on Napont Street, 25 to 27 Napont Street, is now open. The signage has been installed directing folks where the parking lot is. The only thing that is still outstanding are the EV charging stations. And we're still waiting for EverSource to reopen their grant program so that we can get those stations at no cost. So we're hoping January that program reopens. If it doesn't, we'll look at another avenue to try to get those. But until they're in, it doesn't matter when they're in, the lot is open and available for folks to use. It's particularly convenient for the upper end of Canton Center where Elsie's Table is and some of the other restaurants in the area. It's a good spot to park if you don't want, if there's no street parking available. Next up, update on the police chief search. So we have, our team has narrowed the field from 29 to 11 candidates, working with the consultant. And those 11 candidates were issued a writing assignment in which they were asked to respond to 11 questions addressing topics such as how to promote positive engagement within the community, improving communication with the public, department administration, improving accountability, and public trust, some of the, some of the examples that the, that the questions address. So based on these responses, so their responses are in, and we'll start to look at those with the consultants and work through those. And our goal is to narrow that group down to five or six. And those five or six will then be moved on to the formal assessment center portion of the process. And I anticipate that to begin in December. So we're moving along. My goal is to have at least two viable candidates for you to interview in January. But so far, we've, I think we've got a good, a good stable of candidates who have responded. Any questions? Good? All right. Republic, so a couple of things going on. We've got a lot of calls. We've received a lot of calls the past few days about missed recycle pickups in particular in town. It seemed odd that there were so many calls because it's kind of a, since the strike ended, we assumed that that wouldn't be an issue. So we met with Republic officials today and found that Canton has assigned three drivers. And two of our drivers retired unexpectedly. So they are in the process of training two new drivers, which is, and then the holiday, Veterans Day, which has caused them to be delayed in the pickup of recycle. I spoke with, with the Republic Operations Manager today and he assures me that that training will be completed and that they believe they will be back on track next week on the normal schedule. So we'll see how that goes. And if anything changes, I will let you know. But I thank the public for, you know, reaching out to us and letting us know because that prompted us to, to have the meeting and find out exactly, you know, what the problem was. So.
One second, Josh. Do you have a question on the trash?
Mr. Chair, through you, Greg Murphy, Canton resident. I happen to be the Friday recycling pickup on the red week, which happened to have fallen on the week of Columbus Day and this last Veterans Day. In both cases, our pickup should have been on a Saturday. I didn't know if there was a change in, in the contract with the union where they just weren't picking up on Saturdays at all, or didn't know if it was something to expect because we're going to happen to fall on Thanksgiving next week as well.
Yes, so that it, there is no change. So that, that should happen. We're going to give them some grace here and take them at their word that they're, they're training some new people. But we'll see what the performance is going forward. But no, there's no change.
It affects everybody, Mr. Murphy. It affected our neighborhood also, so. It affects everybody.
Yeah, this, this time around, it actually affected other days as well. I know that secondhand, I didn't hear that back in Columbus Day week.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll keep a close eye on it and trust me, folks will let us know. So I'll know pretty quick if it's happening or not. The other thing is an update with our discussions about Republic for credits for Canton for the work not performed during July, August, and September. We've had several negotiations to settle on what I believe is a fair credit for Canton. We haven't got there yet. We're still trying to agree on what's fair based on what we believe what work wasn't accomplished. So we have a difference of opinion on that. We're still negotiating and I anticipate we will have this thing resolved next week. I think we're pretty close. So I will let you know when that happens. The, if you noticed, if you came in tonight, downstairs in the lobby, there is a bin for a food drive. This bin was placed there by a group of Canton High School students that are running a food drive for Thanksgiving holiday to support the Canton Food Pantry. They are part of a student club called DECA, D-E-C-A. And DECA is a high school club that prepares students for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And they do this through various competitions, projects, and community service. So DECA chose to, for their community service project, chose to do a fundraiser for the food pantry or to take donations for the food pantry. So if folks are so inclined, we have that bin downstairs. If you want to stop by Town Hall, support DECA and their goal to, you know, raise food, collect food for the food pantry, please bring some non-perishable items and put it in their bin. That's all I got.
Very good. Before we- Before we go any further, I see a gentleman in the back. Are we missing something? Are you in front of us, or you're just observing the meeting?
Matthew is an Eagle Scout candidate. He is fulfilling part of his communications.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, we're both here just to prepare badges.
Excellent. Well, good luck with that, all right? Good luck with your Eagle.
Thank you. If anyone here has needs for something for an Eagle project, please, I'd be happy to take any inspiration.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Can I just ask if there are anybody out there who's looking to contact the Scouts about an Eagle project? How would one do that?
Could you just speak up on the mic if you wouldn't mind?
I'd be happy to get my scout master, Carl Turgeon. He, I, we have to give it just email. You can reach out to him through there. But I am currently the oldest person in the troop, so I would be the first one to do an Eagle project at this point. So I'd be happy to give anyone my email or phone number or anything else that you find adequate.
Okay, I think it would be best just to get that information to Town Hall so we have it available in case somebody asks for a project that you could definitely get involved in. I myself have been involved in at least four Eagle projects with individual, and it's quite an event. It's a lot of fun, but it's a lot of work. So good luck with your project. So if anybody's looking for a project on, we have an Eagle Scout candidate looking to do it for you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
If you want to have Mr. Turgeon, he can reach out to the executive office. Tell him he can email the town administrator, go on the website with his contact info in case anyone contacts us about a project.
All right, thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick announcement.
Yes, you're welcome.
This Saturday at 10:00 AM, the library is hosting a groundbreaking for the new park. There will be refreshments, and there will be toy hard hats for the kiddos. So put that on your calendar.
Shovels? Will we get shovels?
They'll whack each other if we give them shovels. Select Board will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, 7:00 PM. Salo Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street.
Very good. Just one thing before we adjourn. Wish everybody a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. I hope we all enjoy one another and each other in the community, and have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we adjourn at 8:32.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next continuance for this evening was that of Solomon Publicity Price Ministry stretch, 2390 Washington Street. Oh, sorry. No problem. My job, too. I'm going to vacate my